Does that work?
Okay.
Yeah, we have a Clover kid coming up in September. Clover kids are five to seven year olds and enrollment starts in October. So if you know any families with anyone five to 18, or if you're a little bit over 18, you can come volunteer for us. We need project leaders in all sorts of projects. Thank you for having us.
And then the only other thing that I'll add to that is I've got copies of this new sort of report that we're working on that's our reach report. It's a real condensed version. Normally, our annual report that we bring to you guys, you know, you can flip through. There are several pages to it. I'll leave some extra copies here, too, for anybody else who's interested. But this is just a real brief snapshot focusing primarily on impacts and how many folks in the county were reaching in a given year. This data is for 2024. It was pulled earlier this year in March based on the reporting that we do and that we collect internally. And so you can see how many folks specifically in Cole County are reached by our Small Business Development Center, 4-H, Ag and Environment, Health and Human Sciences, Business and Communities, First Responder Education, and Continuing Education. So it's just a nice condensed little snapshot of the impact that MU Extension has in the Cole County area. Do you all have any other questions or feedback for us? Because like you said, I know you've got kind of a packed agenda today.
I was interested in the Clover because at the Country Ham Breakfast, we had some young people that hams and bacon was almost too big for them. So I did that's and I thought, how young do they start in this? So age five, they can, yeah.
Yes, they can start doing hams at age five. They can't start selling them until they're eight.
Even eight's pretty.
Some of those, carrying that ham, that was, yeah. It's good. Start them out early.
Yep.
I'm thinking that Sentinel Metal, too, about 100 miles, 100 days.
Yes.
Sam's been riding his bike, so we need to get him signed up.
Absolutely, yeah.
I was going to volunteer. You're the senior commissioner with the time, so I think that I would bow to you, sir.
Well, anybody, anybody can sign up for 100 miles, 100 days, and it's not too late to sign up. You can still log your miles. It's not like you have to have them in by a certain point, and that program runs through mid to late September. And the email that Kathy did send out is we're going to be doing a walk around the Capitol in September to log some of those miles. So if anybody wants to come onto that, you're welcome to, and we'll have that up on our social media and everything for more information. Also, Jeff, you jogged my memory. There is another small update. I know that at our council meeting in early August, one of the things that I touched on was the fact that in the federal budget reconciliation bill, they eliminated nationwide the SNAP Ed program. And because of that, there are quite a few Extension staff, particularly our nutrition program associates, who received notice this past Friday that they were being laid off around the state. However, we are lucky enough that Dawn Seavien, who is in the Cole County office, is being retained at this time. So we're very happy to hear that because when you look again at this reach report of the SNAP Ed contacts, that's a majority, Dawn, like she is a hard worker. She's out there busting around the county, reaching out to people. And so we're very glad that she will still be with us. Her job focus will change a little bit because now that the SNAP Ed program is eliminated, that simply doesn't exist anymore nationwide. But she will still continue to do other nutrition outreach programming through the EFMP program, which is Family Nutrition Education Program. So if you have any other questions about that, I'm happy to get more information.
And I should, Greg, just there. Does I do like 85 to 100 miles a week on my?
You could win. You could win a Fitbit. They're trying to entice people to.
I already have one, though.
Well, then you can give it as a Christmas present to someone.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, we will move to our next presentation. Architects Alliance to present an update on the Cole County Juvenile.
Yeah, so thank you, commissioners, for having us again. What you have in front of you is a half-size set of the design development documents. So this is a compiled set after our August first submission, plus a few revisions since we met last week with Toby's staff and some other Cole County staff members to hash out some of the inner working details. To give a quick high-level summary of what we're doing and where we're at, so essentially, this is the first phase that we have completed since we've moved on from the schematic design phase earlier this spring where we identified some budget options to pursue and whether or not we needed to cut ultimately moving forward on this $14 million target. So as of now, we are still on target for the 14 million. We don't see any glaring issues now. Obviously, Napolz is here with me right here, Mitchell. He'll give a brief summary and some timeline expectations of what since schematic phases, this is the DD phase. So as we completed this, we're prepared and are already working into what we call the CD phase, the construction document phase. So what we've done is basically we came up with concepts, the plans, the programs, and schematic, and now this phase is literally as it's self-explanatory in the title is develop that design. So we went through, started selecting systems, HVA C systems, mechanical components, plumbing systems, starting doing the design work in coordination with structural and foundations, what kind of steel, joists, how we're going to simplify the structure and constructibility of this, with a number of other things included. Keep in mind the security, fire protection, and some of the specialty consultants like food services and anything related to IT, electronics, and video surveillance systems. That also includes controls for both the detention side and the respite and residential side. So there's basically a secure side of the facility and then a non-secure side of the facility. I won't go page by page because we just did that last week, and that was three hours long, and we still didn't complete those. We're going to set up separate meetings to talk about exterior and interior finish selections, which we've already compiled a range of different materials and types. We'll share that, those documents, with you guys as well. In addition to that, we'll set up another meeting for the coordination of security so that we make sure that all of the buttons, locations, who has what controls and what offices, camera locations and visibility, we're going to go camera by camera, station by station, to check that off. So we essentially have three other meetings that we're going to set up with Toby's staff and Cole County staff. And then as we have those, we will plan to do any follow-up presentations with Cole County Commission. So as we move into the CD phase, we anticipate November to be our CD submission, so before Thanksgiving, so between November 1st and 15th. We plan to have this wrapped up, signed and sealed, and ready to hand off to Napolz for the construction documents to get hard bids. They are currently working on some budget numbers now with this set that we have done. So they did preliminary budgets back in SD, which helped steer, steered us in the direction that we needed to go based on those numbers. And now they'll do this round and then a final round as they work towards getting contract negotiations for you guys to get this thing moving dirt. So I'll just kind of do some brief skimming through the plans. If you look initially at the first part of this set, the G sheets, those are just general information. So that's going to show you some of the code requirements for egress paths, where emergency exits are, what's controlled, what are the code requirements, also some of the fire barrier construction that is needed in these separate units inside this facility, different wall types for both CMU concrete block and also metal stud with gypsum drywall. Another sheet shows you the different levels of security throughout the facility, what walls are deemed high security, mid-security, and low security. And then obviously, the respite and administration side has zero security, I mean, as far as, you know, more than standard. Then from that, that goes into the next discipline. That's the site work. So that kind of shows you the general site of what we have to work with, what's being proposed, and then you'll also see a lot more has been done to all these drawings. You'll see a lot of details that has been added. We started coordinating storm sewer location, rip rep, curb and gutter, all the topography, where transformers are going, where all the utilities are coming in, how we're tying all the downspouts from the, to get the rainwater, the detention ponds that are required onsite to hold the water, storm water. We also designated some areas where we pulled back. We revised the parking. And in doing all this revisions for the parking, this came in conjunction with us trimming back square footages from our SD meeting to meet the $14 million budget. That means we've reduced the size of the gymnasium or hard muscle workout area. It still looks like a half court, but we did reduce it substantially. And then we also reduced some square footages out of the respite units. So we didn't reduce any square footages in tight quarter locations in secure areas because we were told that that was a high security risk, and so we kind of avoided that. So we trimmed where we could and was feasible, and then maintained where we had to. And that exercise alone, we saved a lot of money and dollars in site because we were able to lower the building by five feet, I believe. So that obviously is a huge amount of fill and grading that we saved on. And then we also slightly shifted the building so that we can accommodate that even more. That also was in conjunction with the parking. So that's why the parking's a little bit different with the pull around and some of that. We kind of shifted to get rid of some parking on what would be the northern side because that's a steep slope, so avoiding that fill. On the backside, we cut into that hill a little bit, but that gives us some of that cut and fill opportunity. That's where we designated backup generators and transformers to be located just across from the Sally Port, so it's in a visible area, easily accessible, but not able to bring high noise to the facility because we were going to tuck it a little bit closer, but we had concerns for noise. So I'm going to go ahead and speed past the rest of that civil work because it just goes into further detail of what all the site items are going on. If you move into the A sheets, that's your architectural floor plans. So you'll start seeing dimensions, grid lines, wall types, bubbles, and all, everything that starts identifying tags to all the materials, doors, wall types, and all the custom things that need to be done. These will all be indicated in more detail. So anytime that you see a section mark or a bubble, that's going to refer to a detail that'll expand on that later in the set. What we did do, with the exception of some of the detention side, is we squared up the building in the front. Now, it still looks like we have some undulations going on, but actually what we did, we had a lot more, and we tightened that up by reducing square footage. We were able to straighten out some of those walls, streamline some foundations. Technically, you know, there's some corners that we could square up, but that in turn would add square footage. So we were doing the pros and cons of really where were we at to get the most box-like structure to keep it simple for constructibility, but we still had some square footages that had to be maintained. If you go over to the next sheet, that's a roof plan. We actually did a lot of structural rework on how this building was going vertically. So we had initially in the schematics phases, we had a lot of different roof elevations, different parapet heights and stuff. We simplified that to where the heart of the building is all one level. All heights, with the exception of a few undulations that happened, will be at the same level. The only areas that pop up higher than that are in four locations. So that is your gymnasium, which has to be a higher volume, Sally Port, which has to be a higher volume, and then we have the space over by the respite for the canopy that goes over that outdoor area. So those are the three main high volumes, and the other one is for the daylighting component of the detention center. We actually had almost like some penthouse-style skylights that were coming out of that, and we were trying to keep it simple. And talking with structural, it was actually easier for us, structure-wise, to make that one sloped roof back to the parapet instead of having a pop-up. So we actually just kind of raised a section of the roof and pivoted it, and that helped us with structural beam lines, also with MEP, with doing ductwork and all of that stuff. So we were trying to find ways that we also have to house all the electrical and mechanical components that get through these spaces, and so that's one of those areas where we trimmed and helped save some economics there. As we move forward into the A 200s, you'll start to see the exterior elevations of the building, so these are just the 2D flat panel views of this. We will show you some 3D. We're working on some 3D rendering so that you guys can help visualize where those materials are versus this. This can kind of bleed together and get a little busy, but we're going to have that separate meeting with finishes and for both interior and exterior, so we'll show you some more details on those, as well as color, materials, and how we plan to actually assemble that wall. To give a brief summary of those materials, we wanted, one, we obviously have a tight budget that we're trying to meet, and then two, we need a facility that at last and has durable dominance materials. So that's essentially masonry and metal panel. And so obviously, the more masonry you have, the more expensive it is. So we tried to maximize the metal panel usage that we can, particularly on the backside. There's a lot of metal panel. The front has a little bit more masonry in the front as you walk up to the building, but the high volumes all have metal panel, and then a lot of the above-window elevations is all metal panel, so we avoid structural windels over large openings. And really, it's, we're trying to create a masonry wainscote that is the perimeter of the building to help against lawn care salts, snow, all of that good stuff that normally attacks the lower 48 inches of the building. So that's kind of where we're at. The roof will be an EPDM or TPO material for the flat roof, and then the sloped roofs will be a metal panel roof to shut that off. What we did in any of the detention areas is we did not use any masonry block or stone that creates ledges or points of grabbing so that they cannot climb, find points of escape, or even use it as a mechanism to cause harm. As you move through the set, you'll start seeing cross-sections, like if you split a loaf of bread in half, you'll start seeing some of these where there's additional bubbles on those. Those are going to go later into the set for detailed wall sections that show how those are assembled. Right now, all of those materials are coming together, so you don't see too many notes and stuff on those, but they're actually currently being populated in our office today. And then as we go through the set, you'll see large schedules. So we have, you know, a huge amount of doors on this project. We break out which ones are secure, non-secure. We started going through with Trainer. They have developed the secure door schedule for all the specs, hardware that are needed for the specialized systems, access control, et cetera. We've also been coordinating with Loudetech, who is the security specialist, who is putting those systems in and tying that together. As you go later into the set, A 602, you start breaking out what the finishes are. That's the finished floor plan. We're going to tweak this a little bit based on what some of our comments are to reduce out some carpet and give a little bit more exposed concrete, and then also LBT. So the main materials in this floor plan is color-coded, so you'll see blue, green, some purple, orange, and then brown. Essentially, brown and gray are going to be your sealed concrete floors. Minimal basically impact on material cost. And then all of the admin area, we try to keep offices, especially for noise considerations. We do have sound bat in the walls to keep private conversations private, and then also carpet on the floors to help with noise transfer. There were some concerns about the corridors being carpeted, et cetera, for long-term use, wear, and tear, so we'll revisit that. And then we have LBT, which is a very cleanable surface, but better, more residential and field than concrete, which we'll have in the respite areas. As you walk into the facility, you'll have a little bit nicer materials in that vestibule and entrance, but that's hardscape materials that are cleanable, wipeable. And then as you go into the facility, those materials soften, and then ultimately you go back to hard concrete in the back. The majority of the walls and finishes, the admin side is going to be basically paint with drywall, and then the secure side is going to be exposed CMU block wall that has been filled smooth and painted. As you go further into the set, you're just going to see some elevations that get started when it's looking at some of the special locations where you have a lot of different glass windows, doors, ceiling elevations that are changing so that we're starting to coordinate all those systems. These will begin to get more populated as we get closer to our 50% CD set, and a lot of pages will be added to this set as well. We're about 90 pages, and I'm sure we're going to break 100 easily. Later in the set, you start seeing ceiling plans, how we're doing this. Majority of the office locations and corridors are going to be a lay-in ceiling, acoustical, and some are going to be more wipeable. So kitchen areas, obviously, are going to meet health code standards for wipeable surfaces, wipeable ceilings. And then as we get into the detention side of the secure areas, those will be more hard surfaces, so gyp ceilings with high open-to-structure ceilings at the skylight locations. Also, open-to-structure locations are going to be where we're not putting any ceiling finishes in besides paint is the Sally Port and the gymnasium. Again, as you start going through these, some sections where you're starting to see some mechanical hoods and stuff populating some of these drawings, we'll actually get more coordinated as we go. The S sheets are the structural, so not to get boring there, but that's all the footings, foundations, and everything that's tying this together. We're coordinating with all the MEP tanks as well so that piping and everything isn't interfered with some of the thickened footings and secure locations for pedestals that we need to have for some of the steel. M sheets are mechanical, and that starts going into all the mechanical ductwork, piping, supply and return locations, fire danger locations, trunk lines, starts identifying RTUs. One of the things that was mentioned and brought to our attention is this type of system, whether or not having a large multi-ton single unit versus splitting that into two smaller units, and that would give you some redundancy in the system for if one goes down, for you guys to be able to maintain that system. We'd price that out. That actually would be a $50,000 increase. So, you know, depending on how you guys look at that, you know, that's either a chopping block item because we're technically increasing the cost, or is it worth that? So we've been. I know, I don't. I honestly don't have that on me, but we can get back with the end units, share that with you. Yes, there is. And I think overall, when Napolz came together, Rebecca gave us a report on that, is that they found that this is about $49,000 difference. And so.
Which units, the rooftop units?
Yeah, so you'll see two units right here on page M 301. That's kind of right back here next to that L.
That M 002, there's six units, so.
Right. Yes, just in the secure area. My apologies.
Curtis, I saw some emails go back and forth, and I know Greg did drop this up, but you were shooting a $28,000 number.
Yes.
This is 48. You want to spend 48? If we added to spend, we would, but this is one that we probably had to pass on to state of 14.
Right. And with that, you know, if there's, you'll notice on the, not this front, this is actually, this type of document that we have is a working PDF, so you'll see these different note tags. So if you go through the set, as this gets updated every time I come back to the commission, you'll see different notes on here, and those are from the different disciplines. But if you look at the front, there's a blank area that says alternates, so we can identify. We don't encourage a lot of alternates because that's just, you don't get the best pricing that way, but if we have a targeted, limited set of alternates where we say, hey, if we can do that, we can do this, maybe three or less alternates, we can target some price points for some savings or some options that pricing comes in good, and you guys are comfortable that you don't like to choose that. As we keep going through the set, the plumbing, that's pretty straightforward, all the plumbing lines and everything that feed water, waste. We did coordinate with Toby and their staff with their preferences on some of the floor drains. We're going to be revisiting those. They're anti-licature, so you can't harm yourself, but we're going to relocate where some of those are so staff don't have to squeaky some locations in case something unfortunate happens. We obviously have a little bit more secure type drainage systems that are going on in the detention side than what we do that's more standard and typical on the respite side and office side. We also have grease, water, debris interceptors, and everything that will capture, blocky stuff that gets put into the system. In the P drawings or P 400, it's also coordinated with the special kitchen equipment. And if you go further down, we start going into the electrical. That's all the electrical sight lighting, some of the gate and control components is how you access the Sally Port, showing details of the electronic control systems that are required for the detention side, door access that goes back to the control system, control panels, switchboard panels, all that good stuff. Then you get into E 101, that goes back into lighting, so you start looking at all the lay-in lighting, where the lighting is different. Usually, all the office and admin areas are going to have a similar type of lay-in LED lighting system. You'll have high bay lights in your large volume spaces or higher bay spaces. So again, usually those volumes, as I said, that hook up, that's where you're going to have the higher bay volume lighting. And then the conference rooms are the only ones that have some linear lighting that goes over the tables. As you just keep going back through this, you start getting into electrical and data locations. This is going to be one of those meetings that we're going to tie into so that we make sure that each office has the right amount of data, whether it's for the state of Missouri data lines or the local county lines. We basically determined we need four lines, three dedicated, and one spare, but we're going to go room by room with Toby and her staff. Keep on going through. You're just going to keep seeing where power is being provided to things. You're going to start seeing some sight lighting and camera locations the further back in the set as you go. You start getting into the ES sheets, you're going to start seeing some 3D views of some, what the control center looks like, what some of the other server systems and server rooms will look like. You'll also start looking at what the camera system types are and how many eyes, locations, mounting type, et cetera. Fire sprinkler designs for fire protection, pretty straightforward. We just put those where they're needed for hedge coverage. Then you get into the food service, so that'll break down all your special requirements and conditions and fabrications and equipment lists for the kitchen. That shows elevation views, so you can see what those look like on the wall. It also gives some isometrics and 3D views of some of the components. Same with the food server line, there's some 3D isometric views of those. And continuing on through all of that, you look at all the hood systems, fire suppression systems for the kitchen equipment. So that, as far as the drawing documents goes, that summarizes what our DB set was. So now, like I said, our next goal is the end of September, so I think the 20-something week of September, we're going to plan to do a 50% submission for CD. So that's just a stop and plot of halfway through the construction document set. We'll have some more follow-up meetings then, and then I can come and also do a dedicated presentation to the commission at that time. As a side note, as we do these other sidebar meetings, and if anything substantial changes or happens, we are more than happy to come here and set up some incidental meetings between the 50% and 100% submissions so we can give you guys some updates, and we can share some of the interior finish selection packages as we walk through those, and we'll share those with you guys, too, so you can see what everything's looking like.
We're building this to current city code?
Yes. Yep.
And we're looking at early next year to break ground.
Well, I'll let, I'll turn this over to Mitchell, and he can start talking about what he's doing with us and schedule-wise, but ultimately, yeah, we plan to get this done in fall, document-wise, so that we can hand off in whatever time Mitchell needs to get sub consultants together and get a contract teed up for you guys.
Yeah, so mid-November, we'd have bid docs out, and we'd have a five-week bid process for all the different subs. That could let us present a GMP close to the end of the year, first of January, depending on actual timing to issue docs. So at any point between then and what, depending on what weather is in January and February, we could do, actually start work onsite and mobilize. We could host a groundbreaking separately. But current schedule would be we wait until March to actually get started with some site work after, if we have a tough winter again, so, and then have a 12-month construction period.
So ultimately, we could potentially get under contract by the end of the year, first of, going into January, depending on how the numbers come in, and you guys agree upon those. And if you're comfortable with those, obviously, we can schedule groundbreaking and get that going, and they can mobilize.
Ground's not too far, roads aren't too hard.
Usually, you know, January and February isn't the best time to start doing footings and foundations, but obviously, some years are better than others, so.
We do have some long lead procurement items, things like that, so we could get out there and get started and still be waiting on steel or rebar those items, so it is a flexible start essentially, depending on when we'd start in January. And I think also on the kind of budget controls, alternates, options. And I think also on the kind of budget controls, alternates, options, as we start to target items that maybe don't make the cut, or you want to pivot to, make sure if it, like the RTUs, if it's impacting a lot of other design details, we probably want to evaluate that in these meetings and scenario, and make a decision then, if it's easy enough to see final costs, or even create a list of items we'd add later as bids come in. That's how we structure this, so it just matter how many people need to weigh in on each of the options and when we'd present those.
I have a question. First, thanks for the emails, because you guys are keeping everybody informed, and I appreciate that, because I know it's a pain to sit and push those out all the time, but the Sally port doors, how tall are those?
They're 12 feet or 14, they're 12 feet, I think.
Just got to make sure we get an handle of them.
Yes.
And then as far as the width goes, I don't know if you want that big enough for one of my jail vans to fit in there in case we have to do a mass. But it may be big enough now, I don't know, but it's just something I was thinking in my head, if we need to get, be able to get a jail van in there to take more than...
If you've come to pick up a youth, what will you bring?
It'll be a patrol car. The only reason we would bring a jail van is if you were doing some type of evacuation. And you may have the capability, or you may have the procedures to do that without me, I don't know, just, but I don't...
I'd have your contingency plan.
Yeah, so we probably need to make sure that the length of the Sally port is big enough that we can not only get the jail van in there, but we can also open the doors.
I think we do all that.
I think it is too, I think we actually talked about this, but I don't, I don't remember.
Yeah, and I'll verify the door size, I don't know what it is. It's at minimum 12, but it could be a 12 by 14. But nonetheless, yes.
So based on what I've heard, from the best-case scenario, from a budgeting point of view, operational costs would not start until March of '27?
Well, technically, it'd be once the contract started and they mobilized, so if they're good, at the end of the year, and we get under contract either by December or January, then technically, you can start incurring cost immediately then.
Yeah, but operational costs...
Not, I'm talking operational...
Oh, yeah, no, sorry, Ms. Surge.
So it sounded like March of '27 was the earliest of thoughts that would be...
Spring of '27 would be, you guys are occupying it.
Okay.
One of the things we touched on last week, Curtis said at the meeting, was the buffer.
Yes.
With neighbors, and just a little history, when we decided we wanted to go forward with the new facility, first question was, how much were in this, how much rent, how big the building is, and how much room do we need? My recollection is we came up with 3.14 acres as the required, an acreage, so we started calling this a pylon, pylon, 3.14 acres. This is over seven acres, and then we were able to obtain at a reasonable price. And because it's 3.14 acres, maybe a footprint, I'm not sure what we got down to here, no, I'm sorry, that's with some parking and so on. We've got, we've got a nice buffer with the neighbors, the neighbor to the north is Highway 50, the neighbor to the south is St. Mary's Boulevard, so there's really no neighbor. Left and right, this is a good buffer between those neighbors in both directions.
All directions.
Correct?
Yes. So you, basically from the building to the nearest development apartment, there's 40, 80, so I mean, 150 feet between them, and then in that is, you probably have 80 feet of old growth vegetation, so old trees and shrubs and everything, so, and then that's in a big ravine, so you have, you basically have a dual buffer from the residences, and then from the street, you actually have another buffer. Some of that will go away as we do some of this construction, but you'll still have a lot of vegetation that surrounds this building. So really, this thing will kind of be a hidden gem in that location.
That also gave us plenty of room for retention, because to the extent we needed for runoff, right?
Yes. Yeah, so we end up using the valley side towards the north and towards Highway 50, and that's where that, because it naturally goes to the east and to the north, and so that's where that detention pond collects. And it gets natural flow from the parking lot too, that direction. So yeah, otherwise, go ahead.
I don't have any questions, I was going to comment, I know there's something in the paper about it. I haven't really had any questions here, it's been the liaison, I know y'all had the DD presentation at some point and stuff, so if I needed something, I would have just called Curtis, he's always been available and stuff, so I was just going to kind of clarify that, I don't know. Sam is more of a time is of the essence, he's getting in a hurry chopping that to bid, wants a conference room with his name on it, I guess. I just, I also want to clarify that on my behalf, I just might, I'm not speaking for the other two, you know, being readily available, NAPOLTS as well, so if there's any way of question on, and, you know, Harry is the liaison, I could, I've just kind of been following our timeline, I think you've given dates, right?
And come back in September if you could, give us a report every now and then.
Yeah, absolutely. So I'll coordinate with you guys and just get on kind of a regular, every, you know, we'll hit in between each of these milestones that we're seeing more than before the 100% deadline.
Okay. Just a little bit of information, the article in the paper indicated we would have a half-court basketball, but that's inaccurate. Original plans did have us with a half-court, because of course, we've cut it back. There are some three-point shots in this...
Yes. It's not a full half-court, so, I mean, technically, it looks like a half-court, but it's a reduced half-court, so, kind of a convenience court.
Three-point arc is there, and it's a little bigger than that. And the large muscle exercise requirements that Toby talks about on occasion, that are federally instituted rules, I guess, is that correct? We've got to have it, but the half-court is a casualty of less than half-court due to...
Yes, yeah. And so, you know, technically, and then that was a pros versus cons of square foot versus volume and try, which it did actually help us considerably, so we got quite a good number of reduction just from that and what that impacted the site, so it allowed us to do some site work, which was great. Yes. So in addition to that, for whatever reason, just as a contingency, we do have in-house, what we've already talked about with each of you guys, for some options in the future, and for whatever reason, this gets tight, but we don't plan on it. So we do have options for potential value engineering to pursue, our goal is to not do that and give you the building that you guys need and want, but if we have to, we do have contingencies, so...
As we broke up last week from the almost three-hour meeting, I had to think about the payers.
Yeah.
You know, one way to maybe be able to afford a little bit more is put payers out there with, you know, compliments of, or...
Yeah, yeah, so I think we can entertain that and talk with everybody and get an idea of what that could be and how we can implement it, so, that'd be good. Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Curtis.
No, this is actually his copy, but...
Can you just make a copy? Make a copy of it, or are you just going to scan it and...
I will give you, I can give you a digital, this will be a pain in the butt.
Yeah, we can't give out that, that's a security issue, so we can't give out a copy of this, am I correct? Under Missouri sunshine, so this can't go out to anybody but individuals that got a copy of it.
I just wanted in the permanent minutes file...
Yeah, I presented it to the commission, so it was not...
Whatever.
No, it's a security, you know, because it's got all the security electronics, it's got all that in there. You could probably burn a copy of just this front page...
Okay.
And get that to her, that way you can reference that something was done. I don't know if that would have anything in of...
No, this doesn't, this is just an indicator, a general cover sheet indication of legends and who's on the team. So I can have that, that way it's place order.
Can I request an agenda amendment? I do have Abigail from Architects Alliance here to discuss proposal, it's the last item on the agenda, so just wondering if we can bring that up a little bit, does Matt be right?
I would disagree with it because he brought it up.
Glad you don't get both.
Anybody who doesn't either, I'll be...
But we have some additional information that we'll feed you guys as well, so...
So, whatever you got that you can give to the Clark's office that is not including this security information?
I can, I can share part of this with you, so I'll send that to you.
I got Frank on the TV, he tells us to be out. He's out there for a while.
I'll come busy here, we'll get to keep it going.
Chief, let's go ahead and debuff you, and then we'll get back to...
Appreciate that. I want to see much of that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Good morning. Still have Abigail Steck here with me from Architects Alliance to discuss a professional services agreement for a Phase One preliminary study of the renovation of the facility at South Ridge Drive. Just a little bit of background, there's been various maintenance issues that we've tried to analyze and adjust over the last couple of years at South Ridge, mainly with floor and water and some of the drainage systems. Also, on the EMS side, we've been looking at trying to remodel one of our facilities every year as a capital improvements project. So a couple of months ago, we tried to marry those things together and look at some of the longstanding legacy issues with the water damage and the floor damage in the building, and then also tie that into a project to remodel the EMS and the crew quarter side of the building. So we did meet with Abigail and her team to kind of talk about what the project would look like and the scope. We do believe this is going to be something that's, you know, somewhat complex and a little bit larger than just your average remodel. So we walked through the building and kind of developed a little bit of a list of what we wanted to look at. You know, a couple of the highlighted pieces are relocating the communication center out of the very small space they're currently in, address the core drainage issues, some of the legacy mechanical issues with the ambulance bays themselves, some of the water and drain damage, looking at the back mezzanine in the very back of the building, which is currently unoccupied and has suffered some water damage, and looking at how we can stabilize that or remove it. And then some exterior upgrades, because, you know, the sides and back of the building haven't really had any upgrades since we purchased it. So Architects Alliance has provided this initial Phase One proposal to do and develop that kind of menu of the items and the costs associated with it, so we can proceed further. And the proposed fee for that is $10,350 with an additional $1,500 fee for rendered images of the exterior if we so choose. Of note, this is really where we're focusing, our 2026 capital budget request. EMS has identified approximately half a million dollars to put into this project, and then also would be looking in general revenue expenditures for the EM side of the building to meet that project need. So that's kind of where we're at, I just wanted to bring this to your attention, have Abigail here to answer any questions. We can talk about signing today, or I can put it back on the agenda, however you guys would feel. I know I didn't really have a chance to really dive deep in this with each of you, so just wanted to bring this and see what your questions are.
We did have a chance to talk about it, I thought to quite an extent, and today, we're just talking about the contract with Architects Alliance. We don't have any layouts, drawings or really any schematics of the building over there. I think we did, when we moved you all up there to the front, we may have some drawings from that, but they're very limited, so I thought it was a good idea to do this and prepare to do something. The mezzanine area in the back is in pretty bad shape. It could be fine for 20 years or 20 days, I don't know. I think we've got the water to be taken care of, that's not a problem right now.
There's a problem with the water line that caused all that damage up there.
So...
I think you bring up a good point, is that, you know, the building has gone through so many various renovations, we don't have any as-built schematics of the building currently, so at least getting those on paper, even if we don't decide to do a project next year, you know, that helps us at least with, you know, maintenance and some of the other issues. You know, Brian recently did some work on the security system, and the vendor had to come in and kind of hand draw their own schematic documents, so this would be helpful at a very minimum with that moving forward.
This is the $10,300?
Yes.
Yeah, I think.
Eric, make sure the electrical gets updated too.
We have mechanical, electrical and plumbing engineers on this proposal with us, so they'd be verifying, kind of doing a general walkthrough of the building, and then also helping with feasibility if they see any issues with some of these projects and budgeting, of course, too.
The health department and the state health department have those coolers written in some of their emergency plans because of vaccine and morgue storage.
So, you know, obviously, we've been working with Abigail for upwards of three years now and her team. I think they've done a great job kind of acclimating themselves to our needs as an organization and how our operations work, and I think that manifests itself in the design of the building downtown, so we're really confident in the product and feel that they have some unique expertise to kind of help us navigate this a little bit. So, like I said, no commitment moving forward, we are with the planning phase to try and identify some money to do this project and keep the momentum going, but regardless of what we do, this is a needed step just to even have those documents, so...
I think we have, what we have out there is something between a hidden gem and a black hole. And so this ought to define, you know, where on that scale we are and what we could do, should do, must do.
I think you guys all had a good point, a lot of our time is going to be spent just documenting what's there, we'll do a 3D model that could be used for a project next year, or it could be used down the road in a few years, depending on how your budget and everything works out for this, so I think there's some value to having that all documented and modeled.
And the trench needs to be addressed, probably pretty soon, we only have, how many more metal plates do we have we can put on there?
I can put...
So...
Probably about a dozen more on there, but that's about it.
I know, we kind of discussed that too, and that would be part of the scope of this, was to make some kind of recommendations on, maybe get some ideas on what it would cost, and the last time we did it was just way out of hand, so had to get some other options. So we had to try to address that and get it actually drawn up rather than tearing into it and then going from there, so...
Do they complete trough drain, just do a drain maybe every 15 foot or something?
So I do have a proposal today, if you guys are willing to go or wanting to go that route, you also have a copy in your email, but Abigail's here in case you have any extra questions.
I'll make a motion to proceed with the contract with Architects Alliance for the renovation of South Ridge EMS station, Phase One preliminary study. The price was $10,350 plus $1,500.
Optional, yes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Thank you.
Okay, we will go back to our agenda, accounts payable review.
I'd ask for approval of accounts payable pending your review.
Motion to approve accounts payable pending review. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Discussion of tax levy for 2025.
No, we were waiting for, sorry, like in this paper. Waiting on for the new values, see what the Board of Equalization had changed, so today is just the discussion. We did advertise the public hearing for next week, Tuesday, so I'm here to, and happy to answer any questions. to answer any questions. I know you guys just got this, too. But again, I appreciate the, I, the counties worked very hard to get these new totals, and it came in at almost nine o'clock last night, so, so here we are with the totals, the school districts, everybody gets the totals.
Okay, that's.
But we are just talking about the general levy tax here and the public works tax here. So if, on the first page, I'm not sure, is that the general? Hold wait there. The first page is the new values, right? So this is what we got last night, the County Clerk's Office. And then the second page is the history of the assessment value, since 1995, just for your information. Then the next copy is the public works tax levy. What, once we have these totals, we put it in the calculation formula that the state auditor supplies to every taxing jurisdiction. So we put it, the totals in, and it says the public works tax ceiling is at .2747. Last year, it was at .2782, so definitely down. The ceiling is down from last year to this year. And again, it's down basically because the assessed value went up higher than the CPI would let it go up. So when that, through this calculation, through the next four or five pages, you can see that it goes through the calculations the state auditor has in their portfolio. And because of the cost of living index, they have it at 2.9. So that stopped our ceiling from going up, even though, right, the assessed value went up, the ceiling came into play, so. So this is the total. So I don't know if you have any questions about that?
Well, not to get into it too deep, but the State Tax Commission comes up with that 2.9%. That's not something that we do in the county. So every county, every political subdivision in the state of Missouri has to live with 2.9. Generally speaking, a political subdivision gets to keep the new values to the extent they are due to new construction, and if they don't, it's 2.9% for the other thing. So there is what we call a rollback. There's a rollback of the, you call it, what do you call it?
Tax levy, ceiling.
For who?
For public works, or for the taxing jurisdiction.
Well, you call it public works, I have really called it roll back here.
Okay, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
In their world, it's roanbridge, yes.
Yes. Okay, so roanbridge, we have a tentative new number for the tax levy, which is lower than it was a year ago.
Yes, lower than it was a year ago, and actually lower than it was with the values that we had before.
Got it. It's, it's to keep the county of Cole from benefiting, benefiting too much from the increase in the assessment.
That's right. It is, that is built in there to make sure that doesn't happen to any political subdivision.
Right. And there are about 20 political subdivisions scattered through this county, or let me put it this way, about 20 levies.
Yes.
Out there scattered around the county, and they're all going through their calculation now because we got the latest numbers late yesterday, and they were distributed to the various political subdivisions. Schools, fire districts, library, Cole County Residential Services, go on and on and on.
That's right.
Okay.
So our first one is the roanbridge levy.
Right.
And then if you go back a few pages, you'll run into the one for the general revenue levy. Our general revenue levy is a little different because we do have that rollback tied to our general levy, general revenue levy. But just speaking of the ceiling for general fund, the ceiling has gone down from last year was 34, .3460, and it went down to .3418. So it, the ceiling went down, just to prove the point that the ceiling is going down. And it went down further than it did from the totals that we had before. But because of our rollback and how that's calculated in there, it's a balancing act between our sales tax and our property tax is what this does. So because of that rollback, we get to take off a .2717, which then I'm suggesting the levy for next week's hearing to be at .0701. So you can see where we were before the sales tax. Sales tax, actually, it takes into account, I don't know, it's this page right before I got into GR, it goes back through the calculation of what we got last year in sales tax and what we anticipate to get this year, and it comes up with a rollback amount. And so because of the sales tax being lower than anticipated in the year before, and the total being lower this year, then it makes us be able to balance out our levy with the property tax rate. So I don't know, it's kind of, kind of loaded, but.
This one gets very complicated.
Yep.
Due to the 60% rollback in back, whatever you want to call that. But at the same time, it results in a levy reduction.
Yes, a major levy reduction.
You say major?
Major. When, when you think of our ceiling as .3418.
Well, from way back, but from one year to the next, it's, it's.
Well, true.
It's, it's this much.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And to the point that you may not, that rollback or the tax levy may get even small enough that you will have to decide whether you take that amount from the roanbridge levy or we just go in the zero for a tax levy.
We'll worry about that when we get to, we're not there.
I won't.
As a matter of fact, we're.
Point oh seven.
Further away from it than we once were, I think.
Right.
So next week, we intend to finalize these two levies.
That's right. So if there's any questions between now and then, if you guys will let me know, I can bring them up. The last sheet is what actually showed up in the paper. We did advertise the public hearing twice. Because it was supposed to be today, we did put it off till next week, so we did advertise it again for next week. So you'll open your public hearing, and then you'll vote, close it and vote. So if you have any questions, just let me know.
If there are any questions, the collector always has.
He has answers.
Brian is my consultant, so I know I always have the right answers. Okay, then we're going to discussion of position changes in the WIC department.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I sent an email about this potential change. So our nutritionist dietitian position in WIC has been vacant for six months, and it's, we're not alone in that battle. Those positions are kind of hard to come by because of their training and because of the salaries that the local public health department and actually the state public health department pays. So DHS has made a exception or a change to their requirement, saying that we can kind of dual allocate that position instead of just being a nutrition coordinator, dietitian, we can make it a slash competent professional authority, CPA, not accountant, but, you know, competent professional authority, and they provide training for that position. So that's what we would like to do because that will open up some possibilities for us. And while we do that, we also want to change our breastfeeding peer counselor position to part-time. So all in all, it will be a reduction in the salary line for WIC, but it will open it up for us to where we can get that position filled, better clinic flow. That's why Melinda couldn't be here today because she's working in clinic, and without a, a full staff, it does make the clinic flow a little bit less efficient than it could be if we were fully staffed. So we're hoping by dual allocating that role, we can get it filled and we can have a, a full staff there in WIC again. So I would just ask for you to approve the dual allocation of that position and also taking the peer counselor role down to a part-time position, which I know we'll have to add, right now, we don't have any part-time position, so that will affect our budget line for that.
What kind of salary?
$21 an hour, which is less than what it is actually, you know, for the, for part-time.
For the slash position?
No, for the slash position, it'll stay the salary that it is now. We'll just add a title to it. So the nutrition coordinator slash dietitian salary will stay the same. The breastfeeding counselor position would decrease. And I'll go ahead, I haven't submitted my budget for next year yet because I was waiting to see if this was approved. And I did include the job descriptions with the email, and Sheila was copied on that, correct?
And when you said peer counselor, that's the breastfeeding position?
Correct. Any questions?
Basically, I'll turn my F, one FT down to a part-time and then changing the title.
Yeah, changing the title, salary doesn't change.
So it's zero budget?
Well, reduction.
Reduction.
It's going to be a reduction.
Yeah.
Okay. I meant to talk to you about this, I didn't get to. I said that was kind of the way it seemed like, is it going to be zero or a reduction.
It's actually a reduction.
I'm good. How do you feel about reduction?
You sent that email to her.
I love it.
Don, do you want that email that I sent to the commission so you know?
Sure.
I'll let you take credit for the motion, then.
All righty. I'll make a motion to approve the position changes in the WIC department as proposed.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Proposed easement across county.
I'll give you guys a quick background on this. The Yanskis own a portion, a small portion of property north of County Park, property lying north of County Park Road there, kind of backs up to the property that used to be Columbia Gardens, now the church property also. But in 2005, an easement was granted across the county property, you can see by the aerial there, for them to have access into that property as a landlocked property. The project had started in 99, according to Central Reserve Professional Services, who drew up that original easement across that property, but it was not acted upon until 2005 when it was granted. Quite a few members of Public Works staff were not aware even of this easement for a couple of years, but it was passed upon. In this past January, Kevin Yansky had contacted the county about the possibility of the political clearing of that easement so they could start accessing the property for, for more use and to possibly put the property on the market. So our staff went out and marked the easement, and upon marking the easement and talking with the Yanskis, it's not in the best location in the world. Nobody knows exactly why they picked that particular strip of ground to go across, but so in talking with them, we asked if they would be open to moving the easement further to the west then, which would involve a lot less filling if they, you know, wanted to get their access road back in there, which they had been granted previously. Moving it further to the west would move it away from the parking lot that has been recently constructed over there and would allow, excuse me, also account for a lot less grading and filling culvert pipe in that area. And it would be, it's in a better location, it sits a little better for all parties involved. It was also found in research on that, that the previous easement granted contained quite a few errors. They had some names transferred, some last names, names were not listed correctly on that, so it wasn't the best document in the world either. So this document would then also correct that, give away with the last one, and then the Yanskis have prepared quick claim deeds that will relinquish any right of trespass across the previous easement. And we ran all this through Cole County Abstract as well, and then the quick claim documents were prepared through their lawyers, which I think was Franca and Dier, no, I apologize, Franca and Dwayne Schreiber, so.
I'm just guessing that they didn't want to go even farther west to the point, and that it got maybe parier over there, no offense.
Further to the west, you run into a problem of, of making those turns.
Okay.
And then you, you roll, you end up rolling, you know, if there's a possibility in the future that, say, the county wanted to sell that, if they did a, you know, a residential area in there and they wanted to attain right-of-way, you get those radiuses that don't fit in as well that way with alignment to the property. So we would just ask for approval and signing of that. It'd clean it up quite a bit.
I'll make a motion to approve the fellow's easing across county property. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay. Discussion of security cameras for health.
Hello. So I sent an email about this, but basically after they did a lot of the work outside, we were checking, you know, the cameras to see if they were placed back on the building correctly. We did some adjustments, and then we noticed that one of the cameras was filled with water, so of course it was not working, and noticed that there was four cameras on the inside of the building that were not working, so if there was like a power, you know, surge or something to do with the water in the lawn. But we had Precision come out and give us a quote to replace the four cameras inside that were not working and the camera outside that were not working. So I did send the quote, I have a copy for you, Don, but if you, we would like to get those replaced because we do use our interior and our exterior cameras. I would ask for that to come out of contingency. I don't have a line item in my budget for those type of items.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposal for the security ILC for the security cameras at the health department. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. MoDOT program order.
I'd like to ask the tableists till next Tuesday. We were speaking with them about increasing the grant amount, so I'd like to get on next Tuesday's agenda.
We can do that.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Bits and contracts, approval and sign of HUBER and Associates agreement for a router replacement.
So about any technology, you have an in-the-life, what's called an in-the-life for the device. And so we have two devices that are getting ready to hit in the life, and they basically just handle the communications between the county and that respective department, and they're called routers. So anyway, I've got two quotes here from HUBER Associates. Jill reviewed the, the agreement, and it is on contract. So both of them are for the amount of $7,218.72. One is for the health department and one is for public works. I would ask that those be approved so I can get them ordered.
Probably come out of the sales tax, computerization as far as.
I was just trying to find it, refresh my memory there. Is that it?
It's coming out of your computers.
That's $7,218. That's the one, right?
Well, you know, there, the end of life is waving. Well, you know, their end-of-life, it's we've, we've got to do something.
Alright. I'm making a motion to approve and sign the Huber Associates agreement for the router replacements and the total was 7218.72 cents.
Yep, for, one, it's free each. Yeah, so it's seven.
Right, so there would be two of them.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Bid award, signing of contract for 2025 concrete joint sealing project.
So this project is to seal the joints on concrete streets that we have been repairing in recent years. And it is with Sweeten Ceiling Services LLC for a total of $76,453.96. I do have a long list of roads that we will be working on, but based on this figure, total centerline linear feet of roads, which is 101,938 feet, which equates to about 19.3 miles, or total joint length of 153,522 feet, or 29.1 miles. This is part of our preventative maintenance area to try to keep these concrete streets in good shape.
This is a sealing of that, that seam, I guess.
Yes, sir.
And to, to then avoid having to remove and.
Correct.
We seem to have a lot of that in this county, don't we, these concrete seams?
What? We do. So with any, any concrete street, you have joints or whether they're construction joints or contraction joints, however you want to look at it. It just allows the, the concrete to expand and contract. It controls where it cracks. And we're, we're trying, this is another new product that we're trying to prevent water from infiltrating through the pavement, affecting the face, so that hopefully we can extend the life of these pavements and not have to do these big concrete replacements that we've been doing in recent years.
I'm good. You have the contract too, you sent?
Yes, sir.
I will make a motion to approve the contract with Sweeten Ceiling Services LLC for 2025 concrete joint sealing project at a cost of $76,453.96.
Nine six.
I'm sorry, nine six. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. A bid award of 2025-22 video surveillance system enhancement.
So we bid out the video system for the Annex Courthouse Carnegie and Maintenance Building. And we did have six vendors that submitted a response. Four out of the seven did not comply with our RFP. Whether one of them didn't attend the pre-bid meeting or they didn't propose the equipment that Brian wanted in the, in the RFP. So we are going to recommend moving forward with Midmo Telecom and Security in the total of 230,500. They have a $3,000 trade-in for the old equipment and the lift cost is included. If you take a look at their year two and three maintenance, it's quite a bit lower than Netwatch. Netwatch for a year is $28,160 for an annual total. Midmo Telecom Securities for year two was $6,720. And then year three is $7,200. So we'll come ahead in the years to come with their maintenance agreement. Maybe not upfront right now because Netwatch is at 204,916. Brian and Holly are here to answer any questions, mainly Brian, though.
Yeah, I'm.
That's Holly.
From Midmo, overall, we have a savings, though.
In the long run.
In the long run, yeah. And they're local, like that.
You didn't send us that new bid ever with that information, did you?
I thought Mel attached it, but maybe not.
Wait a minute, there is. I've got so many attachments to them. I'm still responding, I'm sorry. We initially had this for last week, so.
Yes.
I have the third number. You got the contract too, then?
No, I do not have a contract for this one.
So you're good. Alrighty, I'll make that motion to award the 2025-22 video surveillance system enhancement to Midmo Telecom and Security.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
Thank you.
Bid award of 2025-26 fleet vehicle maintenance for the Sheriff's Department.
We bid out the fleet maintenance for the Sheriff's Department and we had four vendors that submitted a response. Our recommendation is going to be a multiple bid award for 2025-26 with Donnie Braun and Sons and then Big Old Tires. I do have contracts for both of them as well for signature. That big tire should be attached to.
It opened a minute ago and then I saw sheriff on there, so I thought he tabled it, so I closed it out, so.
This is the first year that we've done a multiple bid award for this one.
Alrighty.
There's two contracts. And Jill reviewed the contract.
So we're gonna do the bid award and the contract today, then, right?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to award the bid and sign the contract for the 2025-26 Sheriff's Department vehicle fleet maintenance with Donnie Braun and Sons.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so are they, are they different bid numbers or some, the same bid though?
They should be the same bid.
Okay. I'll make a motion to award the Sheriff's Department fleet vehicle maintenance 2025-26 contract to Big Old Tires.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay. That's all I have on my agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.